Welcome to this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county's website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administrative Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Rick Dyer, Colleen Roberts, and Randy Sparassino, working for you.
Well, good morning. It's 9:30, and I'll call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for November 5th, 2025. We're in the courthouse auditorium. Nice big group. Thank you all for coming. We're also available on Zoom. But we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd stand and join us.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
So we have a host of awards to do this morning. We're going to start with our Employee of the Month, and that's Kristi Walruff with the District Attorney's Office.
(Applause)
Thank you.
Yes.
I love that.
Well, it's my privilege and pleasure to read the award for the Employee of the Month, for Kristi Walruff. I've known Kristi for 875,000 years, so we go way back. Kristi Walruff began her career with the Jackson County on January 9th, 2001, as a legal assistant in the District Attorney's Office. In August of 2016, she became a Senior Legal Assistant, and in November 2017, she moved into her current position as Supervisor 4. I have to read Roman numerals, so I'm hoping that's correct. Okay. Kristi currently manages a fantastic team of support staff and also supports the attorneys in her office. Oh, your office, but she runs it. She uses her extensive knowledge of law, case management databases, and personal matters to ensure that the office operates efficiently. Kristi is an invaluable resource for the DA's office. She also, that's like what I just said. She also has strong relationships with other state district attorney's offices. Prosecution is an area of the law that has undergone near constant changes in recent years, and Kristi has demonstrated her willingness to address these challenges and keep the DA's office updated on the latest changes. When Jackson County was chosen as one of the three pilot counties in the state to start recording grand juries, she led the team to identify the best processes to ensure recordings were made and labeled correctly, disclosed to the defense, and stored properly. Kristi then took the time to assist other counties starting their own grand jury recording processes, showing them how Jackson County proceeded its recordings and handled this issue as they arose. Great work. Kristi is a true team player who takes on necessary tasks without hesitation. She is often the first person that individuals turn to when they have problems and always offers valuable insight on how to approach an issue. For her work with the District Attorney's Office for more than a fantastic job, she demonstrates her commitment to the office and its mission, which is to uphold the laws and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the United States, vigorously and impartially prosecuting crimes, preserving public safety, protecting the rights of crime victims, holding offenders accountable for criminal conduct, and pursuing justice for all with skill, honor, and integrity. Kristi, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on being selected as November's, it's a long thing. I should have took a breath before I started the next paragraph. As November's Employee of the Month, and thank you for your outstanding dedication to the citizens of Jackson County. You truly do make Jackson County better and save her place to live. Thank you.
Well, you know, we all know what a difficult job it is and how vital it is to the entire criminal justice system, and we know, you know, our District Attorney's Office does a great job, but I don't know if many people know, understaffed and a lot of people doing a lot of extra work, and I know they depend even more on support and folks like you with a lot of experience and are ready to get in there and get your hands dirty. So, we appreciate it, well deserved, and congratulations.
I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you for all you do, and you're almost one of our 25-year award service winners as well. You'll be up here soon again. But anyway, thank you, those years of service and that institutional knowledge is so valuable in any department, but definitely where you're at. And I'm glad our District Attorney brought you to our attention, and congratulations. We'll let you have that last word, but we'll turn it over to the District Attorney.
Thank you to the Commissioners. I know this is Kristi's least favorite thing. She hates the attention and the recognition, but she deserves it, not only for our office, but for our criminal justice system in Jackson County. She is really a linchpin and a cornerstone that makes the system function as well as it can. And I know that there's representatives here from the Sheriff's Office that I know agree with that. So this is well deserved. I know you have been an incredible resource to me as a new DA coming in with your institutional knowledge, and you don't always agree with me, which is good and healthy, and when I have harebrained ideas, I need someone to remind me of all the things I'm not thinking of that may hem up the works. So, you have made me better, you continue to make me better, and I appreciate you so much. And I know you're coming up on your 25 years of service, and for the last couple of years you've been telling me I have five years left, but I've noticed the number's not gone down, so I'm going to continue to hope that the number just doesn't continue to go down for a little bit. So, I appreciate you, this is very well deserved. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Can I just yell?
Coming to you with all those problems.
Thank you very much for this. I really do appreciate the recognition. I do feel very fortunate, I have a great team, and I work in a great office with great leadership, and I get to do what I love every day, and so I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
So then, the next award is also from the District Attorney's Office, and it is a 25-year service award to Carol Kitamura. So come up, Carol. And so I get to read your wonderful accolades on this one. For Carol Kitamura, began her career with Jackson County on November 20th, 2000, as a Legal Assistant I and Discovery Clerk in the District Attorney's Office. She transitioned to the role of Legal Assistant II in June of 2003, at which time she assumed responsibility of child abuse cases. She served in this vital role for 22 years, often as a primary legal assistant assigned to the caseloads. Her extensive knowledge and unwavering dedication make her an invaluable asset, and she has generously shared her expertise by training other legal assistants in the specialized procedures required for child abuse cases. When Carol was hired, she brought a strong professional background to the office. She had previously worked as a medical transcriptionist and later as a paralegal in a civil litigation firm. Throughout her tenure, she has drawn on that experience and demonstrated initiative and leadership. Most notably, she reached out to local and regional hospital administrators to improve communication and streamline subpoena procedures for medical staff whose testimony may be needed for cases. This has strengthened communication and collaboration overall between the DA's office and local hospitals. In addition to her primary responsibilities, Carol has been an active and dedicated member of the DA's Office Internal Safety Committee since March of 2015. She's consistently contributing to the well-being and safety of her colleagues and the workplace environment. For 25 years, Carol has exemplified the highest standards of public service with her professionalism and unwavering dedication. We're very appreciative for her outstanding contributions to the DA's office and to Jackson County as a whole. Carol, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on 25 years of continuous service to Jackson County. You have been a devoted and hardworking employee who consistently offers us your best. Thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Jackson County.
It's not hard to see why our District Attorney's Office does operate so well with the, again, the institutional knowledge and just the dedication that so many folks bring to that office, and you being an exemplary example of that, especially where you're talking about the field you're in, it has to be extremely, not just difficult, but emotionally taxing, and to do it for as long as you have takes a very special person, and we really appreciate, because I know it's not an easy job in any way, shape, or form. So, thanks and congratulations again.
I really don't know what more I can add. Your work ethic and the innovations that you've done, it's truly impressive. Your dedication to Jackson County is really appreciated, and thank you very much.
Carol was one of my first legal assistants when I started nearly a decade ago at the DA's office, and I knew then that she was an incredibly hard worker and somebody who did the job, not because it was her job, but because she had a passion for it and wanted to do it well, to help support the prosecutors and make sure that we could do the best job we could do. And she had a difficult caseload, one of the most difficult caseloads that we handle is in the child abuse and child sex abuse, and she did that for over 20 years and supported the DA's that did that important work, and without a doubt made them better and made their jobs easier in that difficult caseload. And so, we're so appreciative for those efforts. You've, over the years, you've passed that institutional knowledge to other legal assistants who have taken over that caseload since, and that is knowledge that's going to continue to be passed down, and so your legacy is going to, even after you eventually retire, which I have the same hope that I expressed with Kristi, with you, that your legacy will continue of what you built at the DA's office. And so, thank you so much for that work that you continue to do day in and day out, so thank you.
I promise this won't be a long story, but it sounds like it's going to be with the first thing I'm going to say, which is, when I was five years old, my fifth, literally my first, fifth birthday, my family arrived in Oregon where my father was about to begin working for the city of Kus Bay. And he had a history of working in, you know, just industry before that, but he was so happy as he entered into service to a community. And he instilled in myself and my brother the understanding that public service, working for your community, is a highly important and honorable thing to do. And since he started that, my brother became a teacher, and then I came into this office, and so we've had a continuous service to the communities we live in ever since my father started that when I was five years old, and I won't say how long ago that was. But anyway, I'm thankful so much that I have an opportunity to do something that means a lot to me, and I feel like I'm actually doing something that is beneficial to the community I live in, and I love my community and I'm grateful for the county, and I'm really grateful for my coworkers. What an incredibly wonderful bunch of people to work with, so thank you.
Well, will we at least know with the 25-year service award, she's at least 30. But being sure when it says on the plaque, it says, "We're going to award to Carol, Carol Kitamura, for 25 years of dedicated service to citizens of Jackson County. Anniversary date, November 20th, 2000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the residents of Jackson County, hereby expresses appreciation for the faithful and efficient services rendered to the people of this county." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for standing for two.
Okay, our next award is from the Roads and Parks Department, and that's Chad Helvey.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I get to do this one. Looks like in 2000, we must have been really, really relieved to get through Y2K, and we said we're just going to hire a bunch of great people shortly after.
Before my time, sir.
Come on, Steve. So, for years of service, and on November 2, 2025, Chad Helvey of the Roads and Parks Department presented this November 5th, 2025. Chad Helvey began his career with Jackson County in November 2000 as a road maintenance worker in the Roads and Parks Department. However, he did not remain in that entry level position for long, as his talents and leadership potential were quickly noticed by his supervisors. His skills and dedication led to consistent transition within the department, including his position as an equipment operator, followed by a lead equipment operator, where he oversaw the striping and symbol crews of the Road Maintenance Division. While in this position, he reshaped how the department striped over 900 miles of county roads and was able to achieve enormous efficiencies and cost savings. In 2013, Chad's ability to analyze processes and lead teams was recognized, which led him to being selected for a Road Maintenance Manager position. In this role, he managed the South District, where he responded to multiple winter storms, ensuring that his team was prepared to safely serve travelers on the high mountain roads during severe weather events. He also worked long days while leading the county's chip seal process that preserves hundreds of miles of paved surfaces in the county road system, which is arguably the most important work for the road maintenance team. In November 2017, Chad's leadership skills were again noticed, and he was selected as the Fleet Manager for the county. In this role, he manages preventative maintenance and the replacement program for over 300 vehicles in the county fleet system. No matter what Chad's responsibilities are, and he is continually focused on serving the needs of county residents and his coworkers while seeking efficiencies that reflect his effort in being a good steward of public funds. Chad, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on your 25 years of continuous service to Jackson County. You've been devoted and a hardworking employee who consistently offers us your best. Thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Jackson County.
Well, too, I want to say congratulations and thank you for your service, and I think when I look at how much of the institutional knowledge we have in every department, it's amazing. It just makes our job look easy. No other county that I see has this kind of wonderful employee depth in our departments, and just thank you for that, what you bring, and staying that long and doing it every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you for helping make our roads safe. Thank you for making them striped, so I can stay in the lane. Thank you for chip sealing, so they last longer, and thank you for keeping our fleet safe, and, most importantly, being a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. Everybody loves that. So, you truly are impressive, and the dedication, you know, like Commissioner Roberts said, the dedication that you see in Jackson County is amazing, and you're part of that, and so thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Chad, I just want to say thank you. You're a pleasure to work with, you're one of the most dedicated people that I've ever met, and when I say dedicated, I mean dedicated to the taxpayers of Jackson County, dedicated to your coworkers, dedicated to our department, but many might also know that Chad is a dedicated community member, been coaching baseball at all levels for 20-plus years.
Thirty plus.
Yeah, 30-plus years, has coached many people in this room's kids, and is just really growing a population of young men in our community that are going to be contributing back to our society in a positive way. So I appreciate everything that you do for us within Jackson County and within our community. You're a great person to work with and a great role model for all of us.
Appreciate it. Yeah. I would just say thank you to all the people that helped me get here. There's been a lot of people that I work with that are very, very good, that have given me the opportunity to do all these things, and without the support of them, I wouldn't be where I am today. And very appreciative to have a career in Jackson County. It's been a very good place to work, so thank you.
All right, this one's long, and the writing's small, so I'm going to have to be able to see it and maybe take a few breaths while I read it, learn from my mistake from earlier. So this one is for Ben Fazio. Can Ben come up? One second. We don't have a second.
Action, we on?
All right. Well, another person that I've known for like 6,000 years, but you probably got hired at 16. I actually look my age. So Detective Ben Fazio began his career serving the Jackson County residents in 1991 as a volunteer firefighter. Many of you probably did not know that. I did not know that, so this is good info. Jackson County Fire District Number 4 in Shady Cove. He worked in the position for eight years, during which time he also volunteered as a Reserve Police Officer for the city of Shady Cove from 1997 to 1999, when he was hired as a full-time police officer for the city. Detective Fazio began his career with the Jackson County Sheriff's Office in November of 2000 as a Criminal Patrol Deputy. He quickly excelled in his role as deputy and was soon selected as a Field Training Officer, where he played a pivotal role in shaping the careers of new deputies. His sense of humor, work ethic, and team-oriented approach led him to the White City Community Action Team, as a role he was dedicated to for nine years. During his time on the Community Action Team, he consistently led by example, earning the respect of his colleagues, the community members, and the community members alike. Detective Fazio's commitment to the work in White City and the Community Engagement Team made a lasting impact, contributing to a safer and more connected community. His work not only enhanced the quality of life for residents, but also served as a model for fellow deputies to follow. Detective Fazio cares deeply about his coworkers and their well-being, which led him to the role as a representative in the Jackson County Sheriff's Employees Association. During his time, he advocated passionately for his team, and despite the hardships that this created for him and his family, he continued to work on behalf of his coworkers. For the past nine years, Detective Fazio has served as the most senior deputy medical examiner within the sheriff's office, providing critical support in some of the most sensitive and important scenarios. Detective Fazio worked closely alongside retired Detective Tim Pike, who was instrumental in transforming the medical examiner's office into a model of professionalism and excellence. After Detective Pike's retirement, Detective Fazio stepped into the role and carried this legacy forward, continuing to elevate standards, strengthen collaboration, and ensure that the office remained a cornerstone of investigative excellence and compassion. Throughout his career, Detective Fazio has exemplified the sheriff's office values of character, competence, courage, and compassion, and we are grateful for his contributions. Detective Fazio, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on 25 years of continuous service to Jackson County. You have been a devoted and hardworking employee who consistently offers your best. Thank you.
Again, after four, it is amazing, just the number of great, long-term employees we have, and how that does translate into us as a county being able to offer the services in the way that we do. And I know Sheriff Sickler likes to begin and end his presentations with, you know, Jackson County Sheriff's Office wants to be the best sheriff's office in the state, and I think we live up to that, but we only live up to that, and I know the sheriff would agree with this, because of the employees that we have, and employees like you. There is one thing, though, whenever the bio mentions a sense of humor, you have to tell a joke, so I hope you're ready for that.
I don't know if they're...
You're ready for that? Okay, yeah. Turn off the cameras, we'll do it later. Anyway, congratulations and thanks.
I think we hear that all the time, "It's not for this audience." Anyway, congratulations for 25 years. I know Commissioner Sparassino mentioned he's known you for 6,000 years. I think maybe I've known you longer, because back in the day, I think I did a wedding cake for Ben, but anyway, I just want to, it's my honor to be part of the award of your 25-year service to Jackson County, and it's always neat when I know someone from back when they were kids, and what great contributions you make to our county for our citizens, and it just makes me feel really sorts of pride. So thank you so much.
Well, I've had the privilege of working with Ben for, I think, my entire career, in a roundabout way. I was hired in October of 99, and anyways, when I came to the sheriff's office in '06, you know, we really started to, you know, I guess forge a better friendship, but I'll tell you, the write-up that we did for Ben doesn't really encompass the, I think, the man here that's standing before us. The work that he does in the medical examiner's office is difficult work, some of the hardest, I think, that we do in law enforcement, that and child cases as well. But constantly dealing with people in their worst times and being compassionate and professional really shines a bright light on the sheriff's office and public safety overall. And so I really appreciate the work that you do, and that Tim was mentioned, and Detective Watkins back there. I couldn't do that work, I don't think, and so I'm really thankful for you guys, and for those that don't know, we probably have the best medical examiner's office in the state. I think we have one of the most unique programs in the state, very dedicated detectives who do that work, and it's unique and it's special, and it provides the residents of Jackson County with something that other places don't get. So, thank you guys for doing that work. And then, I'd like to talk about other things, because we talk a lot about work, but we don't talk about what you do outside of work. Ben has also been a baseball coach for many years. His son Luca's a college baseball player, and Ben's been a big part of that, but even when Luca went off to college, Ben stays and helps with the Eagle Point High School baseball program. So another man who's dedicated to the community and, you know, invests in many ways other than just public safety. The Halloween carnival that he puts on, co-hosts with our partners from the Fire District III, to give employees opportunities to bring their kids to a safe place on Halloween and have some fun. So, just really appreciate all you do for our community and for the sheriff's office and the residents of Jackson County. I also like to acknowledge his wife, Leslie. She's been there the whole time, and, you know, that's a big part, the work that he does is demanding, a lot of call-outs. I think just this last weekend, you had, what, 14 calls in a couple days and maybe three hours of sleep in between some of those calls at best, so it takes team effort, and certainly, we appreciate you, your sacrifice over the years, and Luca, and Daphne's here, and Olivia's not here, but his other daughter, so thank you for allowing him to be a part of our team.
Thank you. I was doing pretty good before that. No, absolutely, some of the stuff that we have to do is tough, but with the people that I work with, it's absolutely amazing. It's an honor to be able to be there in those times to do that, as hard as it is. Man, it's, yeah, I've got a great team, Tim, Tim Pike. I can't say enough about how much he has made me want to be better in the job and as a man, so I just love that you're here, Tim, so thank you. Leslie, Daphne, Luca. Again, some of the things you mentioned, one of my favorite, I don't know, accomplishments but assignments was working for White City, the Community Action Team, was absolutely an amazing experience, and that's something that we continue today at the sheriff's office, and it's very important. So, when you're talking about highlights or whatever, to me, the nine or years... So, when you're talking about highlights or whatever, to me, the nine or years or whatever that was there, absolutely amazing. I had great partners I worked with there, and we did a lot of really great stuff. But it's been a great career, like ups and downs, as far as some days, you're like, "Wow, I can't believe I get paid to do this. This is really fun." Like, they give me all this stuff and I can drive fast and, you know, all this cool stuff. And then, some days, it's like, "Wow, what am I doing this for? This, you know, we don't get paid enough for this." But I think it all evens out. And again, just, yeah, thank you for the opportunity and it's been a great career. So, anybody that's looking to get into law enforcement, they should absolutely look at the Jackson County Sheriff's Office. So, yeah.
Congratulations. Good to...
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Trying to figure this link out.
We'll just give a minute for everybody's leaving us. Five-minute limit. Pursuant to the Codified Ordinances of Jackson County, Section 213.06, members of the public may address any item that's not on today's agenda. However, pursuant to O.R.S. 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda. Therefore, we'll listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raise by having staff following questions or placing the matter on an agenda for discussion at a future meeting. And we have a sign-up sheet in the auditorium. Nobody's signed up, but you're still welcome to come up. If you came to address the board, come to the podium. If you're online or on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand and we will bring you in to the meeting as well.
Madam Chair, I don't have anyone with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Thank you. And nobody came forward, so we're just going to move on. Move on to Consent Calendar. We have minutes of meetings, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for October 15, 2025, the Board of Commissioners' staff meeting for October 16, 2025, and an order appointing Joseph Crawford to complete the term of a resigned member of the Ambulance Service Quality Assurance Committee, and that's Order Number 236.25.
Move approval of the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you. We don't have any public hearings. We have a couple items for discussion deliberation, and the first one's kind of long, so bear with us. It's a first reading and scheduling of a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 250. It's our boards, our commissions, committees, councils, and authorities generally, and repealing Chapter 251. It's the Airport Advisory Committee, Chapter 257, Board of Health, Public Health Advisory Board, Chapter 260, the County Health and Human Services Advisory Committees, Chapter 261, County Roads Committee, Chapter 262, County Road Specifications and Road Variants Advisory Committee, Chapter 264, the Jackson-Josephine Regional Board, Chapter 271, the Commission on Children and Families, Chapter 272, the Law Library Advisory Committee, Chapter 277, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Chapter 283, the Status of Women Advisory Committee, Chapter 284, the Taylor Grazing Advisory Committee, Chapter 293, the County Wolf Advisory Committee, and Chapter 295, Marijuana Advisory Committee, and Section 612.06, the Animal Control Advisory Committee of Chapter 612, and the Animal Control of the Codified Ordinances of Jackson County, Oregon. It's just a revision of all these into one more streamlined. I'm sure Shannon will give us more on this. It's Ordinance Number 2025-4. Shannon, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, over many years, Jackson County Board of Commissioners has adopted orders and ordinances creating or amending chapters in the Codified Ordinances of Jackson County pertaining to its boards, commissions, committees, councils, and authorities, generally advisory committees. The Board recognizes the need to update the requirements relating to the establishment and operation of its advisory committees and wishes to reestablish a baseline of requirements, including bylaws. Therefore, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners has determined that in order to establish and list all advisory committees in Chapter 250, it is necessary to amend Chapter 250 and repeal Chapter 251, 257, 260, 261, 262, 264, 271, 272, 277, 283, 284, 293, 295, and Section 612.06 of Chapter 612. It is recommended that the first reading of the ordinance be held on November 5, 2025, and that the second reading and public hearing be scheduled for Wednesday, November 19, 2025, at 9:30 in the courthouse auditorium and by audio/video conference. And I will say, this was a lot of work.
Yes, it has been.
And it sounds like a lot of numbers, but there's a lot of thought put into it and a lot of meetings and discussions.
Thank you.
So, I will move approval of the first reading and scheduling of the second reading for Wednesday, November 19, 2025, 9:30 here in the courthouse auditorium.
Second.
Commissioner Sparassino? Or, sorry, Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, I just wanted to, again, I mean, this was a long, long process that took a lot of staff time, a lot of staff effort. And I know the board greatly values the input from these boards, commissions, and committees, and we just wanted to make sure that they were operated as efficiently and effectively as we could, respecting the board members who serve time and our staff time to administer them. So, I wanted to thank the staff for doing such a great job. This was a long, long process and a lot of work, and they did a great job on it. So, thank you.
And we'll probably have more deliberation after the second reading as well.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you. The next item is order authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Rogue River Greenway Foundation, Bear Creek Greenway Foundation, and Jackson County. It's Order Number 237-25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Rogue River Greenway is a multi-use trail that will link the northern portion of Bear Creek Greenway to the city of Grants Pass. The Greenways are part of the Jackson County Bicycle and Pedestrian Network that is part of the Jackson County Transportation System Plan. This memorandum of understanding, or MOU, sets the roles and responsibilities between the parties if grant funding for the project becomes available. The Rogue River Greenway Foundation and the Bear Creek Greenway Foundation will provide any matching funds necessary to secure grant funding. The county will serve as the lead agency if project development and construction becomes necessary and will not be obligated under this MOU to provide matching funds for grants or pay any direct costs associated with the project. Term of the memorandum of understanding is upon execution until amended or terminated on December 31, 2030, as provided for in the memorandum of understanding, and it may be extended for one additional five-year term. There's no financial impact.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
No.
Can I take a motion?
Move approval of Order Number 237-25.
All second.
And I think this is another one where staff has used a significant amount of time, and Steve Lambert as well, with the Parks and Roads Department, so...
Ongoing effort just to make them as safe and useful and the utility to the public, as well as, you know, make them resilient to fires or any other sort of disaster that may occur. So, good work.
Yeah, the Greenway is a gem for our region and it's a tourist attraction, and I think anything we can do to improve the Greenway is vitally important.
We'll take a...
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you. And that concludes our agenda, so the meeting is adjourned.
We hope that you've enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming.